All right, so we'll begin. Board, before we begin meetings, we do invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, National Anthem, Mission Statement. I'm going to call upon you whether anyone here wants to read an invocation.
I'm glad to, Chairman.
Very well, Mr. Weisire, please proceed.
Thank you, let us all pray. God, we come before you now as always thankful that we have the pleasure of coming before you. We ask that, as always, you give us the wisdom that we need to make decisions that are in the best interest of the students that are entrusted to our care and to the community that we serve. We certainly pray for all those that are working on the front lines right now to overcome and mitigate the risks and the health concerns associated with COVID-19. We pray for them and their families that they might have strength in this challenging time. We thank you for who they are and what they do and for their willingness to step up and to serve and protect all of us. We pray for our leaders across this nation that are making the decisions every day to ensure that Americans are healthy and safe. And we pray for our teachers that are working so hard every day in their homes, distance learning, to ensure that our students are continuing to learn and continue to grow. And we thank you for the countless staff across this district that are working every single day in different departments to meet the very many needs of this district and to ensure that not only what's happening day to day is being handled as best as possible, but also that the business of the district will continue to move forward. We pray for your guidance, your will, and your wisdom, and we thank you once again that we have the pleasure of coming before you. It's in Christ's name that I pray, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Weisire. Is there a board member that wants to volunteer to read the pledge?
I'll read the pledge, Mr. Chairman.
Please proceed, Ms. Castillo.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. You know, I'm going to take a stab in the dark here. Anyone wants to sing our National Anthem?
Mr. Booth?
This is a perfect time for you to break open the instrument and do a little bit. Now, okay, the mission statement, Dr. Pace? We'll skip over. All right, that's, all right, so, and board positive comments or comment statements, which board member? I'm going to just go down, down the district number and start with Ms. Castillo, if you want to.
Sure, thank you, Chairman. I just want to congratulate everybody on doing a really great job with this digital learning transition. Everyone is working really hard, and I can attest as a parent that I really appreciate our students being able to continue their learning journey. Thank you.
All right, very well. I'll go up next as District Two. Yeah, you know what, I want to share with board is that I do, I did make a couple of visits to our schools that are right now still operating for the purpose of assigning technology, laptops to our students, and also distributing meals, and very importantly, taking the calls of the community and our parents and our students. One of the interesting things is that they, you know, our employees at these, at these centers, they have a different perspective, they have a, they're having a different experience than maybe that, that we're not having. So it's good to talk to them and get information, and they're always willing to share. I'm just going to go ahead briefly because we have so many things to cover. I just share a few things from Principal Condo, she's over in Ventura Elementary, and we had a really nice conversation, and you know, she, she explained to me and she talked to me about her interactions with the community. Well, first of all, that they're doing all their work in a, in a safe and efficient manner. But they also, but she also explained and, and gave me some, some anecdotes about what's going on, the conversations that she's having with parents, with, with students. And, you know, it's very, it's very enlightening. It adds to, to my, my, the information that I have to consider and, and the things that we vote upon and what we're doing at this school district. I specifically do want to share that we have a lot of support, at least from, from my interactions here, I believe that the support in my district from parents and the members of the community is strong. And Ms. Condo shared with me that specifically how a member of the community, the PTO, Chairperson Diane Arrendondo, and I hope I said the, the Avendano, if I had to read it, to make sure, I'm kind of nervous anyways. But, you know, here's an individual who's stepping up, and I just wanted to thank her on behalf of the school district and my district for the contributions that she's making. As we go forward, this may be something that we're going to be doing for the immediate future, maybe a few more meetings, things was moving out. But I only have a positive report from my gathering of information to share with this board, and thank you for the time to do so. I'll pass it on over to District Three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comments, I will be brief, but I want to make sure that I recognize the technology team in this district, even today as we once again sit doing our distance and virtual meeting. There's a lot of work that's happening every single day to ensure that our students have access to devices, to ensure that the systems at the district are working effectively, and to ensure that all the tools are in place for us to be able to host a meeting even like this. And I just want to take a moment to say thank you personally, not just for myself, but on behalf of the entire board, for everybody that's working so hard in those departments to ensure that we meet the best that we can, the digital demands and the digital needs that we face at this time. And I also just want to, once again, take an opportunity to thank and acknowledge our superintendent, Dr. Pace. You continue to perform at an exceptional level. I've said it before privately and publicly, this community is fortunate to have you as a superintendent of schools, really as a whole, but specifically in this challenging time. You've continued to show the leadership that this board knew that you had in this challenging time, not just to get by, but to exceed expectations and to manage your teams in a way that ensures that they fully understand the importance of what they're doing every single day to take care of our students and our children. The last thing I would just say, although I said I'd be brief, a little longer than I intended, is just thank you to all of our parents, like all the board members, and I'm sure so much of the staff. I get feedback from parents on what's working, what's not, what the challenges are. And we know that this is a difficult time, and we know that this is difficult for everybody and challenging and creates a certain degree of anxiety and stress in the home and for you as a parent. Know that we want to continue to do the best that we can to support you, and know that all of us want to be on the side of this so that we can have your students back in the halls and the classrooms of our schools all across this community every single day. Hang in there, continue to work and partner with your teachers for each one of your students. Your teachers so much care about your kids, and they want to ensure that they're succeeding. And so, please remain patient, and please remain supportive, and continue to engage your child's teachers so that that partnership can truly be in place to ensure the best learning opportunity for them. But God bless all of you guys, it's a difficult time, but I truly believe in our community and the people that are leading it and the people that are living within it. So, thank you.
All right, I'm not sure if it's, if it's, Mr. Thacker, are you going to make a statement?
Yeah, I was waiting on you, you've been going through the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't call you by name, I just called you by district. Please proceed.
Okay, I didn't, didn't hear. I don't want to add too much, what Tim said, I agree, certainly with everything he said without being too redundant. But I do want to thank the people that have been having to go in the office every day. I know that's tough, and it brings its own challenges. But I do want to recognize, and my hunch is, there's several thousand employees have now figured out that working at home is not the easiest thing in the world, especially when we're used to going to an office where things are, a classroom, or a school board, or a school district building where things are very focused. It's very easy to be distracted at home. It's very easy to think I can run up and do something real quick, and all of a sudden, the day is gone. So, thank you to those who are learning to do that and who are getting through that. It is not as easy and fun as it sounds to be, like, oh, boy, I get to work at home. Maybe for some, but I work at home a lot, and it's not. It's very easy to be distracted. So those who are getting their lessons done and working with the students, I thank you very much. And that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Clarence, and to District Five, Mr. Booth?
Can you hear me, Mr. Soto?
Yes, sir, please proceed.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, everybody said, took, took all, being last, you lose everything, but I just wanted to say, I've told several folks publicly and privately, and I think the toughest job aside from maybe being a doctor, a nurse, or a first responder, working with, with patients at this time, is probably being a school superintendent. So, thank you to Dr. Pace for all her, her hard work. Thank you to the teachers and all the staff, parents and students certainly have been working through some issues with folks, but I just want to say the staff has been very responsive, and everybody seems to be working extremely hard. And I know this isn't a new normal, I don't like that term, I think it's, it's a, you know, it's a, kind of a, just something we're doing in this moment in time. So, I appreciate what everybody's doing to try to make this work, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Booth, Dr. Pace?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, thank you, just, just briefly, I, I do have to say a tremendous thank you, both to the board for your support and your leadership during this time, but also to all of the people across the district and across this community who, like all of you have said, are working so very hard to try to make this transition to digital learning work while also keeping the basic operations of the district moving forward. It has been an incredible team effort, and it goes all the way back down into our homes. We talk a lot in Community Engagement Goal Four about that important partnership between our school district staff, our school district employees, our teachers, our bus drivers, our custodians, but also our parents, and how important they are in times like these as they're the ones on now on the front lines kind of helping to try to support their students' learning. We're not perfect yet, we're getting better every day at the work that moves forward. We'll be better on the other side of this than we were when we started. But I just want to thank everybody again for your patience, for your flexibility, and understand that we are doing everything in our power, and we'll continue to do everything in our power to help keep students learn while also helping to keep our community safe, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. So, board, I'll go and move the agenda to Section Number Two, which is Appointments and Transfers. We have Dr. Pace.
Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman Soto, and thank you, members of the board. This is a highly unusual opportunity, but again, we all know that not only are we trying to wrap up this school year as successfully as we can, but we're also planning for the 2021 school year, which will be here before we know it. And to do that, it's so important that we have strong leadership teams identified for the district and for each and every one of our schools. So with that, I'll ask for your consideration first for Item 2.01, Approval of the Administrative Appointment for the New Principal for Osceola County School for the Arts. This would be effective on June 1st, 2020, and it's my pleasure to recommend Mr. Dennis Neal. Mr. Dennis Neal is currently an Assistant Principal at Tohopacaliga High School. He's also been a teacher at Deltona Middle, an Assistant Principal at Heritage Middle, Deltona Lakes, Pine Ridge High, and Deltona Middle, Principal at Heritage Middle, University High, and Leesburg High, Assistant Principal at Oak Park Middle, and then now is in the current position helping Mr. Phelps and the team at Tohopacaliga High School. He received his Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education from Florida Southern, a Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from Stetson University. And I have to tell you, I learned some things about Mr. Neal this week. He is also a visual artist, has successfully shown his own cartoon and charcoal drawings, and also has done some performances in a Wild, Wild West show. So we think he's very appropriate to help lead the students and the staff at Osceola County School for the Arts to even higher heights. So it's pleased, pleased to recommend him.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, so I think I hear a motion to approve by Ms. Castillo and a second by Mr. Weisire. Board, at this time, I'll take any questions or comments before we take a vote. I don't see any hands, that, I'm sorry, Mr. Booth?
Your hand.
I'm good, aye.
Oh, okay, take down your hand, Mr. Booth. All right, so, hearing nothing further, we'll take a vote. All those in favor to approve, please state aye.
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 Aye, raise your hand.
Okay, I, I see, I see, I see Mr. Booth's hand, so, all right, so, the vote, I'm pleased to announce the vote passes five zero. Congratulations, Mr. Neal, welcome to, to the team.
And with that, board, I'll move to Item 2.02, Approval of the Administrative Appointment for our Director of Middle School Curriculum. Michelle Henninger has been an Assistant Principal and Principal at Horizon Middle, Director of Virtual School for Polk County Schools, and currently serves as a Senior Manager for School Leadership in our Training and Development in the Osceola Professional Development Department. She received her Bachelor's Degree in Women's Studies from the State University of New York in Binghamton, a Master's Degree in Varying Exceptionalities from Nova Southeastern University, and an Education Specialist Degree in Educational Leadership from Nova Southeastern University. She's currently also working on her Doctorate Degree in Leadership from the American College of Education, and she'll be a wonderful partner to continue the work supporting our middle school principals, teachers, and staff members right alongside Mr. Allen.
Okay, very well. Board, do I have a motion to approve and a second?
So moved.
Motion.
Okay, so a motion to approve by Mr. Tim Weisire, a second by Mr. Ricky Booth?
Second.
And again, I'll ask for hands if anyone wants to make a question or comment. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All right, I heard five, therefore, the vote to approve passes five zero. Congratulations, Ms. Henninger.
And now, board, I'd like to ask your consideration for Item 2.03, Approval of the Administrative Appointment for Assistant Principal for Canoe Creek K-8. It's my pleasure to recommend Mrs. Amy Miller. Amy has been a teacher at Pointiana Academy of Fine Arts, a teacher at Kissimmee Elementary School, math science coach at Kissimmee Elementary School, and as you know, was a, our District Teacher of the Year and a State Teacher of the Year finalist back in 2016. She received her Bachelor's Degree in Education from the State University of New York and a Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from American College of Education. We are super excited to have Amy continue the work that she started with Mr. Noyez at Canoe Creek K-8.
Board, motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, motion to approve by Mr. Booth, second by Mr. Thacker. Before we take a vote, any comments or questions? I don't see any hands except mine, I'll put it down. All right, so we'll take a vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 All right, I heard five, therefore, the vote passes five zero. Congratulations, Ms. Miller.
Thank you so much again, Chairman Soto and members of the board. And finally, I have a series of Assistant Principal Transfers that I bring to you under Item 2.04. Some of these are based on personal requests, family commitments, as well as the unique needs of some of our schools across the district, and these again are for the 2020-21 school year. First of all, I recommend Beth Tolimco, currently the Assistant Principal at Sunrise Elementary, to become an Assistant Principal at Neptune Elementary. Jennifer Albright, currently the Assistant Principal at Narcusi, to become the Assistant Principal at Sunrise. Rachel Bynum, currently Assistant Principal at Central Avenue, to become the Assistant Principal at Narcusi Elementary. Jose Vasquez, Assistant Principal at Westside K-8, to be the Assistant Principal at Lakeview Elementary. Francisco Rivera, currently Assistant Principal at Celebration K-8, to Assistant Principal at Westside K-8. And Stephen Lewis Jean, currently Assistant Principal at Gateway High, to become an Assistant Principal at Celebration High. All of these are lateral transfers.
Very well. Board?
So moved.
Second.
So a motion by Ms. Castillo to approve, second by Mr. Weisire. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we take a vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
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 Vote passes five zero, congratulations to all. This takes us to the, is it Dr. Pace, correct?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Very well. This will take us to our, to the third section of our agenda, which is the public comment. Dr. Pace, would you just put on the record how we, how we are going to handle this?
Yes, sir, as stated on the agenda, we have taken public comment two very, in two ways. One via the dedicated email, and then the second via the dedicated phone number. And Ms. Culver does have, I believe, two public comments to read into the record.
Very well. Ms. Culver, are you ready to do that now?
Tanya, I don't think, we're not hearing you. Is your mic on? There you go.
Can you hear me now? Okay, well, I'm getting that little strip again, Shane, so I can't see anything. Okay. Hello, I have two students in Osceola County Schools. One is in fourth grade at Cypress, one is in eleventh at Gateway. This has been the most stressful, overwhelming week of our life. I don't feel the teachers were prepared to switch to online schooling. I could write a book on all the obstacles that happened just in the first few days. To be a working parent and assist the kids was more challenging than I anticipated. I tried to cut to part time, but that was not enough. I will need to quit my job just to help my 10-year-old with her work. There should have been a few days of getting to know the online system work before work was added for students to complete. If I had had a hard time figuring things out online, I cannot imagine what an elementary school student is going through or a parent with a few little ones. Videos were not, videos were sent days later on how to navigate through the different programs. Most of the programs we attempted to use were not functioning the way they were supposed to. So most of the day was wasted just trying to find access information. My fourth grader was already struggling in school and in tutoring a few days a week, so her learning and work is taking double the amount of time it would take other children. Each subject is taking her one hour, so she has spent hours, morning and evening, doing schoolwork just to be able to keep up and not fall behind. Most of the worksheets will not open due to the system being overloaded with too many people online. Some pages show blank. Typing online and submitting online is not possible because there is a delay while typing. This has been frustrating for all involved. I purchased a new computer, so that is not the issue. My daughter's teacher has been helpful, but for her as well, she is learning as she goes. Some of the work done online will show incorrect, when the answer is actually correct. So grading it will be unfair. For the students that are doing this alone without help, are they really learning? For the students doing it with the parent's help, the parents now have got, have become the teacher. I think too much work and expectations were set too high to start something new. The glitches should have been worked out, and more training involved before the switch. Sorry, it's, it's, there was more anxiety involved for online school than the actual coronavirus. Talking to other parents and teachers, I know, I am not the only working parent feeling this way. I also know not all counties experience this. Some counties were organized and went smoothly. This has been a nightmare, and I hope it gets better soon. Don't feel it is fair to grade students on things that aren't being properly taught to them by a licensed teacher. Thank you, Christina Martinez. The next one is very lengthy, it's four pages.
Hold, hold on a second then. Rather than have you read that into the record, is there just a way that, that we could just publish that into the record by, by document?
I would have to defer that to Mr. Kruppenbacher since we had already stated they would be read into the record, or Dr. Pace?
We do have a three-minute, we do have a three-minute time limit. And, you know, there's a purpose for that. If it's going to be something lengthy, I still want to include it into the record. Is, Mr. Kruppenbacher, can we add that into the record? Like, I would like to read it rather than hear it.
Actually, because I think going forward, we should clarify that we will only read three minutes worth, so I will time this because that's what we allot for speakers, and then it will also put into the record. But I would recommend that we follow what was said earlier in the meeting and let Ms. Culver read three minutes of it. If she's not done by then, I will advise you all that she's not, she is done.
Very well, Ms. Culver, please proceed, three minutes.
Okay. To our superintendent and school board members, I will begin these comments by stating that while your efforts in these unprecedented times of a global pandemic filled with unpredictability, confusion, and concern are greatly appreciated, there are many aspects of what has been done so far to continue the education of our students that are concerning and frustrating. Granted, there are no previous experiences from which to draw a comparison on how to proceed with daily life as COVID-19 is something that this country, thank you, and the world overall has never experienced before. However, the decisions that have been made by SDOC for continuing education throughout the district during, during school closures are inconsistent, to say the least. First and foremost, the plan to develop and implement a digital learning platform in such a short amount of time for thousands of students and educators through the district was quite frankly, not a very good one. The Microsoft Teams platform is just not working. Just yesterday, Monday, April 6th, my son's third-grade teacher started the day with an email to all parents thanking them for their patience and preaching optimism about the Teams platform, despite multiple glitches. Shortly thereafter, the same teacher sent another email explaining how bad the system was, behaving, where it wasn't loading, no progress was being saved, and that he himself had decided to not even try to access it again for the rest of the day until after 6:00 PM, where we would hope for the best. This is just one example of the constant struggles with this platform since last Monday, March 30th, when it was launched, where everyone have shared on your Facebook page multiple times what a mess it has been. How is this consistent for student learning? How does this promote consistency for the educators that have suddenly been given a crash course about online learning with a platform that does not work on a network infrastructure at the district level that is simply not capable of handling the sudden increase in online traffic? How is it fair for students to be expected to complete three hours of online learning a day when they can't even get the assignments to load in Teams or even save their progress? This approach of making online learning the top priority for continuing education during school, so, school closures was poorly planned, poorly executed, and has become a real mess. The time that was invested by SDOC in recent weeks for developing a student online learning program that was enabled for thousands of students and teachers all at once should have been invested instead in the development of a paper-based curriculum. Teachers should have been given the opportunity to develop curriculum that could have been shared with students and parents through the school site in the form of paper packets that were to be completed by students during the school closures and then submitted either at the end of this COVID-19 emergency, in person when in-school instruction resumes, or weekly through electronic submission by email to their teachers.
Just pause, Ms. Culver.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Culver. All right, is that the, that was it, the two that we had to read in, Mr. Kruppenbacher?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're going to go to, we're going to move to Agenda Modifications. I'm going to go down by district, Ms. Castillo?
Yes, I have two items that I'd like to discuss, if it pleases you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to discuss possibly providing bus vouchers for students as well as providing the unemployment applications at some of our meal distribution sites safely.
And Ms. Castillo, would it be, would it be appropriate, okay with, and okay with you if I assigned those to Section 21 of the board agenda, which is Board Member Comments and Committee Report?
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, so, I'm going to go with, I, I will also be giving an opportunity for the board members in Section 21 to discuss a little bit what, you know, the, what was shared with us through the public comments. So I'm going to add that part. through the public comments, so I'm going to add that part. I may actually have some questions for, for staff as well. District 3, any modifications?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I was going to add what you added with my role at the Florida School Board Association. I have a global perspective, and I know the challenges that we're facing are not unique to Osceola, but are statewide and nationwide issues, and I'm glad to address that under Section 21.
Mr. Weiser, I think that's going to be very useful.
Thank you.
All right, District 4?
No changes or modifications.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Kruppenbacher. District 5?
I have no changes or modifications. I do want to say, though, after hearing those comments, I want to make sure that everybody knows right here that I haven't spoken to any educational leader across this state or this nation that hasn't experienced the difficulties expressed in those two public comments. I mean, maybe not at that level, and there may be some disagreement on what is and what isn't, but not to get too deep into it. But certainly, I think it does kind of at least, you know, talk about some of the frustrations that we've seen, and certainly, we're all across this nation trying to strike that balance. So, I appreciate those folks sending that in, but I can tell you, this is not something that's unique to Osceola, and it's good to have partners all across the country that we can work with and try to sort all this out, so. But I have no modifications.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the modifications, including the consent agenda.
Second?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with these modifications, which are part of the board comments at the end of the, near the end of the meeting. Mr. Kruppenbacher, and a second by Ms. Castillo. All those in favor, please state aye.
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 And the modifications have been approved, 5-0. The next section of our agenda would bring us to...
Chairman Soto?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I apologize, my, my hand is raised.
Oh, sorry. I got like three windows up.
We did have one additional agenda modification that I needed to propose to the board. I believe Mr. Shatara sent everybody an email regarding item 15.01, approval of the request to purchase passenger vans for our athletic departments. We have an opportunity to get a very competitive price for these, for this particular purpose, and with the board's permission, we'd like to add that to 15.01.
Very well, so, we still have the motion to approve, but the second, am I correct? Any change?
I will modify my, I'll modify my motion to include that change for 15.01.
Very well.
As well.
All right, so, I'll call for a vote, the consent agenda with, with the, with the discussions added and the superintendent's blue sheet item recommended under business and finance. I believe that's where it's under, that's 15.01, as a motion to approve by Mr. Kruppenbacher and a second by Ms. Castillo for the record. Is that correct? Any, if that's a critical vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
All right, so now the vote does pass 5-0. And that would take us into information, agenda items. The first thing is a 12.01, information of the monthly business advisory board meeting for February 26th. That's in the packet for the board perusal.
Mr. Soto?
Yes, ma'am.
For all four of the information items, the, all of the attachments and information was in the board docs for you guys to review.
Thank you, very well. Before I go on to 13, any comments, anything that we need to stop on here? I don't see any hands. So, we have right now, item 13.01, which is the approval of the charter agreement renewal for Florida Cyber Academy. Do we have any discussion, or do we call this for a vote? I see a bunch of hands, can't tell which ones are first. So, I'm just going to go down by, by district again. Ms. Castillo?
I apologize, I was up from something else.
Very well, I don't have anything to add. Then I see Clarence, Mr. Kruppenbacher, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I answered either. The question I have on this is, I'm not, I'm not really too in favor of extending this under the circumstances when we are doing things virtually, and we need all the virtual resources we can get, and we're promoting virtual online learning right now. I know Dr. Pace and her team have been around and around with this. I think that's probably hurt somewhat her feeling too. So, I just, I'm, I'm not happy that we're doing this, but I think under the circumstances, maybe we have to. And I do agree with some of the restrictions, if it has to be approved, basically not increasing students and reducing to K8. And with that, I, I will very reluctantly support this.
All right, Mr. Weiser, I didn't mean to skip you, I just didn't see your hand.
No, I don't have a hand raised yet, sir.
Very well, thank you. Dr. Pace, I do see yours.
Yes, sir, Mr. Soto, there is a video. Remember that the board requested for Florida Cyber staff to do a presentation. Obviously, that's limited, but we do have the video that, it's, it's short, that Ruben can play for the board and the public, with your permission, sir.
And, Dr. Pace, before I call for a vote on this item, can you just explain to this board why you're recommending we approve this?
Yes, sir, as Mr. Kruppenbacher said, at this time, when digital learning is really the way of the world right now, I have worked with the team from Florida Cyber, as well as Dr. Rafowski, our new executive director for Charter and Choice, to strengthen the programming that they're offering in their K8 piece. We've also put in the safeguards and precautions of a one-year renewal and keeping the same cap on enrollment that they've had in previous years. So, what I will pledge to, to the board and to our community is that Dr. Rafowski and her team and I will support in monitoring and working with the Florida Cyber team to ensure that the education we're providing to all of our K8 learners, whether they be in our schools or our charter schools, including Florida Cyber, is of quality.
Very well, and board, I'll make just one final comment after hearing from the superintendent. Always concerned about any kind of operators, and specifically charter school operators, that, that they say and they, and they advertise one thing, and then it's a completely different other product that they're delivering to our students. And I agree with Mr. Kruppenbacher, this is an area where we are developing this type, you know, of techniques and, and to provide distance learning. But more importantly, it is the assurances of the superintendent that the school district will be monitoring and that, that this organization will be delivering what they're promising our student, our community. And for that reason, I'm going to support it. Mr. Booth, did you have something? I see your hand.
Yeah, I did, I just, you know, even the caps on, I'm going to crack, keeping this, no high school. I may use different language, Mr. Kruppenbacher, and yourself is reluctantly supporting. I will reluctantly vote yes on, on this, but I will not, I'm not really supportive. Let me just be clear on that.
Very well, if, seeing that we've all had our opportunity and seen other hands up, I'm going to call for a motion.
I would like to see the video that was been prepared.
Is there a way that we can, Ruben, if you can hear me, is there a way that you could go ahead and present that video? It looks like it's queuing up.
Hello, my name is Samantha Sheffield, and I am one of the principals at Florida Cyber Charter Academy. On behalf of our head of school, Dr. Sandra Anthony, our central board, and my colleagues, I'm excited to be able to highlight our sustained efforts to increase achievements so that we can carve our path of being a model virtual school. We share in Osceola's core beliefs to inspire our students to reach their highest potential. And at the conclusion of this presentation, it should be evident that FLCCA is devoted to its continued improvements so that we can continue to serve the students who need us most. As outlined in this deck, our goal is to demonstrate our school's improvement. And to do so, we place a greater emphasis on a more robust, multi-tiered support system, rigorous, high-quality instruction, and informed decision-making through strategic data analysis. These charts exemplify the laser focus my colleagues and I continue to place on increasing ELA and Math scores. This year, we've moved to a new diagnostic assessment tool, NWA Math Growth, a nationally recognized research-based assessment to better differentiate instruction and pinpoint individual student needs. Based on our fall-to-winter data, students are on track to increase achievement in both ELA and Math with improved growth and proficiency. It does not go unnoticed that our overall achievement is of urgency, which is why we've been deliberate in our professional development and coaching to focus on reading and math instruction. For example, in our earlier grades, we placed emphasis on fact fluency for automaticity, which will allow students to devote their critical thinking to problem-solving and application of real-world mathematics. In ELA, instruction has shifted for students to write about their reading for deeper comprehension and text connection. I'd like to draw your attention to the top of the slide, which outlines our two areas of focus, which are to strengthen our work together to reach all students and to ensure they are engaged and ready to learn. This slide also outlines the components counted toward improving our school grade with demonstrated growth specifically for our lowest 25% and learning gains subgroup in ELA and Math. We appreciate the guidance and support Osceola has given us, and great attention has been placed on our MTSS program. This year, through school-wide effort, we've improved our intervention programs to ensure evidence-based interventions and strategies with adaptive instruction to better meet the needs of our students. The leadership team is very intentional in their planning, with engagement and achievement being our driver. We coach our teachers in lesson planning and instruction with quality feedback during bi-weekly observation feedback sessions and weekly PLC collaboration. The leadership team conducts weekly instructional rounds so that quality and consistency is guaranteed across grade levels. To ensure accuracy and alignment of our results with our internal assessments, we thoroughly reviewed and revised our interim assessments conducted through USA Test Prep to closely match the rigor and format that students will see on the FSA. We have built these tests so that their blueprints mimic that of the FSA, but we've done so in a scaffolded approach throughout the year to build stamina and competence within our students. In addition, we've audited our curriculum to ensure a sound instructional program and utilize lesson resources and formative assessments vetted through CPOMs. Again, we want our students to thrive and find their passion, and particularly, we recognize the potential of our middle school students and the need, need to increase acceleration. And as a leader in providing digital instruction, we're excited to offer our students courses focused on digital information technology. Again, acceleration is of priority, and beginning in 5th grade, teachers and administrators will review and select the most appropriate courses based on multiple measures, FSA scores, full-year grades, and teacher observation and recommendation. Will match the level and complexity of the curriculum with the readiness and motivation of our students. And through this, we know we can increase our middle school acceleration by 2021. We stand committed to building our partnership with you. We know we are on common ground when we say school improvement is of top priority. We provide an opportunity for students and families who need us. We have been and will continue to break down the physical proximity barriers to not just improve our school grades, but to empower our students to become the best versions of themselves. Thank you.
Board, I think that concludes the presentation. I hope everyone had an opportunity, I believe you provided it to us previously, but if, but I, I did not watch it until now, and I was able to see and hear it. Anyone else, any comments about it?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, yeah, Mr. Weiser, you were the one who asked. Okay, so, Ricky, you still have, Mr. Booth, sorry, you still have your hands up. Okay.
Not anymore.
All right, and, but I don't see any other hands. And, you know what, I'm sorry, but I didn't write down who made the motion, the second. Can I hear them again?
Yeah, there was one made yet.
Oh, no, that, that explains it. Board, let me, let me discuss this a little bit more. One of the things, and this just goes back to the public comments that we heard, there is just so many challenges right now, but this is a new, I guess this is uncharted grounds, but a, but a direction that a lot of communities and a lot of education systems want to explore, which is the distance learning. And I believe this is being done at just about every level. Again, I'm going to, I understand that this district has to put a lot of items for us to consider, whether they are in favor or against. They do have to put these items in an agenda, but I specifically asked whether the district was in support of an approval, and, and what I heard from the superintendent is that they weren't. So, this is, this is, I'm, you know, I, I trust Dr. Pace's judgment on this, and I trust that this charter school will be monitored and supervised. And for that reason, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a vote, anyone, at this time. Okay, if I understand correctly, I can only second a vote, I can initiate a vote. So, if I don't have...
Make a motion to the vote.
I'm sorry, I cannot make a motion to approve, I can only second it.
The chairman can make a motion to approve.
I don't, Mr. Kruppenbacher, is that correct, under Robert's rules?
Yes, you really wish to gavel, make the motion, then take the gavel back.
All right, well, in this case, I'm going to pass the virtual gavel to Mr. Weiser. And again, you know, I defer to the judgment of the superintendent and adopt her judgment and make a motion to approve.
Thank you, so at this time, recognizes a motion on the floor about Mr. Soto's, or second to the motion. Hearing no motion, at this time, the motion would fail for a lack of a second.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Weiser.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is your attorney. If it's not being approved, then the charter is going to expire, which would mean Dr. Pace would have to bring forward a recommendation to terminate the charter or non-renew it. The problem with that on an appeal is, our superintendent, after doing a lot of due diligence and work, is recommending that it be approved. So, I can share with you that going to Tallahassee to try and defend...
Mr. Kruppenbacher?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes.
I really appreciate, you know, your comments. I'm not going to second guess, the board made its judgment, all right? So, we'll deal with whatever features come from this decision as a time, you know, when we get, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Do appreciate it, though. So, we just have to move on, all right? On regular, is that, is that fair, Mr. Kruppenbacher?
Well, I hadn't finished my comments, but it's fair. If the board's not going to make another motion, then Dr. Pace will sort it out.
It, it, it seems as though you want us to consider the process of a board decision in order to reconsider the board decision.
Well, the board made a decision, the board just didn't support a motion, so there was no formal voter or decision made. There wasn't a decision not to renew or to renew. So, what I'd like to do is have this put on the agenda at the next meeting. I don't know what the recommendation will be from the superintendent, but it will afford us the opportunity to legally sort this matter out.
Excellent, that's what I, that's a, thank you, Mr. Kruppenbacher. I think by our action, it still leaves the board, the board, the door open to consider further information on another, you know, if this gets placed back in the agenda for us to consider, correct?
Yes.
Very well.
Do we need a motion then to postpone this item till the next meeting?
No, I think that what's going to happen now is just going to go through the regular process where it will be added on to the agenda at board. You have the opportunity to discuss with staff, whatever other information you think that may persuade you to, to vote a different way. Otherwise, I think what Mr. Kruppenbacher is saying, is not approving this, it's akin to terminating the charter. So, with that in mind, this item comes out...
But we haven't taken a vote on, we haven't taken a vote on that either. It's an agenda item, we can't just ignore the item, can we?
No, let, let me say this, first of all, you're not voting to continue it. It's not akin to anything right now, and I want nobody interpreting it, other than... I want nobody interpreting it other than, I would like a motion to table this and have brought back this matter with whatever the superintendent, after we confer and go through it, recommends for your consideration at that meeting.
I will make that motion to table this item to the next meeting.
I'll second that.
We're going to make a comment.
I'll hold my comment until we get the motion on the table regarding postponing action on this item until our next school board meeting.
Very well. All right, so I do hear then a, a motion on the table. So basically, I'm going to withdraw my motion, correct?
You don't have to, you don't have to. It failed for a lack of a second, and currently Mr. Gruppenbacher's made a motion to postpone until our next board meeting, and I've seconded that motion.
Very well. So, board, it appears that we have a motion to postpone this item by Mr. Thacker and a second by Mr. Weisire. Is there anything else to add before we take a vote on those motion? Seeing them, then we'll take a vote. All those in favor of postponing, please state aye.
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 All right, hearing the, hearing that there were five votes, motion to postpone and move to a future agenda has passed five zero. Which brings us to item 14.01.
I'll make a motion to approve item 14.01, Mr. Chair.
Very well.
Second.
A motion to approve item 14.01 by Ms. Castillo and a second by Mr. Weisire. Any further questions or comments? I see, Mr. Thacker, I don't know if you have your hands up, has that been there before?
Yes, I do have, I just put that out.
Oh, yes, sir.
Um, I will go ahead and support this. I just, uh, it concerns me a little bit when we lower some standards like that, and I understand we're going to get these people in a, in a mode to get their degree as quickly as possible once they're there, but their unemployment is getting higher by the minute around there, and this is, you know, I don't want to make light of a very bad situation, but in that situation, we've got to hire the best that we can find. So, um, we are an educational institution, so it bothers me just a little bit to be lower in that standard, but I, I understand that when times are tough, it's, we got to get, we got to get people in there that work and making, having a high school diploma doesn't make you a better person or a bad person, so I'll support it, but again, a little bit reluctantly.
Very well. Mr. Booth, I see your hand.
Yes, if you can hear me, I was going to almost say about the same thing, Mr. Thacker said, I will say, I will vote yes, but I certainly hope, and I know they will, be on a track to, to get their GED, and if we're there to help them do that, I think it could be a win-win.
Very well. Ms. Castillo, I see your hand.
Yeah, just for clarification, and maybe Dr. Pace can help me, the way I'm reading this, this is just to have them considered, right? It doesn't necessarily mean that we will hire folks without a high school diploma, it just means that that is not a part of the qualifications at this moment, is that correct?
Yes, Ms. Castillo, that's correct. Board members, if you remember, we have done this in recent times for bus drivers and school nutrition services employees as well. And when this actually came to discussion six weeks ago, we were in a very different time period, but we will certainly always hire the most qualified person, but we also do look to make it a win-win, as Mr. Booth said, as we bring new employees into the organization who may not have been able to meet that high school graduation requirement, to make sure we get them over to our folks at Alco and enrolled in our GED programs to help them continue to gain their skills and move ahead.
All right, Mr. Weisire.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I want to make sure that all those that are joining and maybe aren't looking at the agenda, the item that we're discussing right now is waiving high school diploma requirement for centralized custodial department. And I think the other board members, including superintendent, made a very clear point that for me, the way I'll be voting on this, and I think it seems to be pretty universal, is we want to ensure that we have the workforce we need to support, what needs to happen in our schools. Just because somebody does or doesn't have their high school diploma at this point does not necessarily mean that they are, aren't able to meet that requirement or perform the functions the way that we would want them done in the school. And this is a redemptive opportunity for us with our Adult Learning Center to provide an opportunity for people in our community to obtain gainful employment within the Ossio School District and continue to pursue their education within the offerings that we have. So because of those reasons, I support this, and I think that it would be a move in the right direction for us to provide opportunities for additional people within our community as well as provide access to high-quality education for adult learners.
Thank you, Mr. Weisire. I see everyone had an opportunity to put their comments on the record, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and call for a motion.
I made, I made the motion, Mr. Chair. Yeah.
And who seconded it?
We already have that, I believe.
I did, Weisire.
Okay, very well. So just to, just to refresh the record, there's a motion to approve by Ms. Castillo and a second by Mr. Weisire to approve item 14.01. Board, at this point, at this time, I'll take a vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
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 Hearing that the five of us voted to approve, the vote passes five zero.
Mr. Chairman, I would like a motion to approve item 16.01.
Fifteen.
Or is it fifteen, excuse me? Fifteen zero one, fifteen zero one.
Very well. So, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Thacker, it's an item to approve by Mr. Booth, item 50.01, and a second by Mr. Thacker.
I'm going to raise my-
Yes, sir. Go.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Shatira and, you know, transportation and the athletic directors and everyone. I know we've had these discussions over the past couple of months about improving athletic transportation, so I want to thank the district staff for, you know, getting out in front and trying to solve these issues, so thank you.
All right, so, anything further from-
And hopefully save us some money in the long run.
All right, so, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Both hearing none, vote passes five zero. Brings us to 15.02.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 15.02.
Is there a second?
A second.
Very well, thank you. Item, item, motion to approve item 15.02 by Ms. Castillo, second by Mr. Thacker. Board, before we take a vote, any discussion? I'm looking for hands.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, please proceed, Mr. Weisire.
My question to Dr. Pace, Dr. Pace, will you just provide a little bit of comfort for me regarding the work that your team will be doing regarding the CAP department?
Yes, sir, Ms. Castillo, as you, I'm sorry, Mr. Weisire, as you know, they have struggled a little bit in recent years under former leadership and former management with their financial picture. It is getting better each and every day. They are demonstrating curriculum enhancements as well as enrollment growth, and so we believe they're on the right track, but we did still have to document a corrective action plan based on their financial situation for DOE.
So things are moving in the right direction, there's still room for improvement, and your team's got your hands wrapped around this.
Yes, sir, very tightly.
Thank you, ma'am. I speak in favor of the motion.
Very well. Anyone? I don't see any other hands, so, um, are you going to make the motion to approve, Mr. Weisire?
It's already been made by Castillo, second by Thacker.
Okay. So we have a mo, okay, so without any further discussion, motion to approve by Ms. Castillo and a second by Mr. Thacker, all those in favor to approve, please state aye.
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 Hearing the five of us, vote aye, the motion passes five zero. Brings us to item 15.03.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Thacker, second by Mr. Booth. Any discussion on item 15.03? Okay, I don't see any hands in that, so we proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
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 Your, vote passes five zero. Brings us to-
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item 16.05.
Second.
Before we do, I have got some questions on 16.04. I don't know if we want to pull it out or just do the discussion as part of the whole grouping.
Let's do the discussion, let's do the discussion and then, and then if we need to pull it out, we'll do that. So I have a motion to approve by Mr. Booth, 16.05, which encompasses 16.01 through 16.05, and a second by Ms. Castillo with discussion by Mr. Thacker on one of the items. Mr. Thacker, please proceed.
I was looking at the, this is the item of the 1.8 million for the lights at Point Sienna, and I spent a lot of time today kind of digging through that, and I'm actually trying to get to it right now. One thing that I understand why we went with Fort and Smith, because they're already mobilized on the site. I get the fact that they are mobilized there, and there should be some savings associated with that. What I don't understand is when I start looking at some of the detail, the fact that they're mobilized should mean we're seeing some significant savings, and I've got to tell you, it's got one electrical company going in and replacing out all the lights in the school, and they've got a project, senior project manager scheduled at 28 hours a week, and I'm going from memory here because I can't get the thing to open. We've got a, basically, the superintendent at 40 hours a week, we've got a foreman at 40 hours a week, we have a project engineer at 16 hours a week, and then administrative assistant, I believe, at eight hours a week. And when you take their general conditions and their fee and general requirements number, you're up to, I think, and again, I'm going from memory, about $325,000. Those numbers are in line with somebody going out on your own, starting a project and doing the whole thing. Quite frankly, I know I'm not a construction person, but that's a lot of overkill for one subcontractor out there doing the work, in my opinion, for whatever that's worth. And I have a problem supporting this based on that. I, I don't feel that the amount of effort when we've got a very large, very competent subcontractor electrician out there doing this job, I don't really know what two full-time people are going to do watching them take lights out and put a new light in. So I, I, I'm afraid it's going to have to be removed because I can't support it.
Thank you, Mr. Thacker. Now, um-
Miss, I will, I will, um, a motion, Mr. So, and I will now make a motion to approve item 16.01.
Very well.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to approve 16.0, Mr. Thacker withdrew his motion on 16.05, makes a new renewed motion to 16.01 to approve, a second by Mr. Thacker. On item 16.01, do we have any discussion? I do see hands, but I think that has to do with 16.04.
Correct.
My, my hand is up for 16.04, I'm sorry.
I know, but the, Ms. Castillo, Mr. Weisire, is that also for 16.04?
It is, I'm going to pull mine down and come back to it at 04.
Yeah, we will get to it again. Thank you. Ms. Castillo?
Yeah, it's the same thing, I just, I just wonder if Mr. Clinch is on the line, if he can help clarify some of those questions.
I believe, I believe that, I, I believe that Dr. Pace also had her hand, so I'm going to go to her first when we get to 16.04.
Can we, let, why don't we get through 01, 02, 03, and then we can do that?
I'm going to follow your suggestion, Mr. Booth. So we have a motion to approve of 16.01. Without any further discussion, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed sixty, five zero.
Make a motion to approve 16.02.
And we have a motion to approve 16.02 by Mr. Thacker and a second by Ms. Castillo. I'm just pausing to see any hands on 16.02. Seeing none, I'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
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 And on 16.02, the vote passes five zero, brings us to 16.03.
Ms. Chairman, we'll make a motion to approve 16.03.
Second.
And we have a motion to approve 16.03 by Mr. Weisire, second by Mr. Booth. I'm pausing for hands, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The motion passes five zero, brings us to 16.04. I would like to see the hands back up, but I would like for Dr. Pace, I believe that she had her hand up, and I would like her to provide us with the comments that we need to, to consider.
At this time, Chairman Soto, with the board's permission, I would like to defer to Mr. Clinch as our chief facilities officer and the expert in the field in that regard. I, I don't feel prepared to answer that, the questions right now. They're very good questions, I just want to let someone who's an expert know.
Excellent. Board, can we, can we go ahead and allow Mr. Clinch to proceed so that we can then formulate our thoughts and responses?
Yeah, but if we may, Chairman, because it may be best for Mr. Clinch to address all of the concerns of the board members in his comments as opposed to addressing and then coming back. If I may, proceed.
That's a good suggestion, thank you, Mr. Weisire. I'll, I'll call on each one of you guys in turn, please proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Thacker for his comments on this. I think he was very wise in pointing out what he did. I will say, from firsthand experience, knowledge, and being on-site, certainly, this, this enhancement is absolutely needed at Point Sienna High School, there is literally no question whatsoever about that. It's a project that's been long overdue and something that we've been working to get towards. However, I give a lot of credibility to what Mr., excuse me, what Mr. Thacker just shared with us, and I, I think he's pointed out some very valid things. I would share with the board in advance, I would be perfectly fine, unless I hear something differently here soon, I'd be very fine with not voting to approve this now to address some of those items and cost concerns that Mr. Thacker pointed out. I'm in support of the project, but I want to make sure we're doing the right thing, spending the right money, and so I'm going to have to be convinced at this point that the dollar amount on the table respective of the various positions and oversight that were pointed out are really the right thing for us at this time.
Very well, thank you. I don't see hands from Mr. Booth or Ms. Castillo, I just want to verify that that's correct.
That is correct.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Clarence, Mr. Thacker, please, I see your hand, so, is your, is your time?
I just want to be very clear, my question is not the validity of the project, I, I'm all for doing this project, it needs to be done, I just, I'd like to take a harder look at those numbers and make sure that we're getting the benefit of, of a company that's there, and, you know, e- even if we took this thing down ourselves and went out to three electricians and get the quotes and move forward to that, I don't know, something doesn't feel right with me on that.
Thank you, Mr. Thacker. So, since the board already made their comments and have some questions and concerns, Dr. Pace did defer to Mr. Clinch. Mr. Clinch, are you?
Yes, sir, I'm on the line, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So let me start by saying, first, to board member Weisire's point, the lighting is in poor condition, the lighting is a very old-style fluorescent, those fixtures can no longer be serviced, so we have been scrimping across the district to continue to provide the light levels needed, and as you know, those minimum light levels are a code requirement, so this is, you know, something that we, we take seriously. The lighting upgrade at Point Sienna High School is long overdue, but I will specifically address board member Thacker's comments regarding the general conditions. So there is a project manager that is 28 hours a week, a superintendent informant that are full-time, 40 hours a week, and a project engineer 16 hours a week, and a project assistant eight hours a week. This totals $175,089.60, and that's the general conditions for the construction manager to manage this project, which includes two trades. It's the acoustical ceiling tile, the acoustical ceilings, and for the electrical, as Mr. Thacker noted. We did get very good bid coverage, minimum of three bidders for those two areas, and keep in mind that we have various project administration requirements. So that's what the staff will be doing, along with providing the management, onsite management for that work. And the staff that is not full-time, they are being shared with the other projects that are currently ongoing at Point Sienna High School, that's the Business Academy and the Central Energy Plan. and the Central Energy Plan. Uh, so I, I hope that, that helps to provide a little bit more background.
All right. I'm gonna give Mr. Thacker a chance. Um, the floor's yours. Clarence?
Yeah, just, just to be clear, I, I, the mi, the project's a million eight. Uh, the acoustical ceiling, again, I don't have it up, and I'm pretty sure those are the exact hours that I quoted for the, uh, general conditions. There are two other subs that are listed on there. I think one's a painter for ten thousand dollars, and one's an acoustical ceiling or something, drywall for another eighty-three thousand dollars. So, uh, the million eight project, a million seven is for the electrical lighting. I totally agree it needs to be replaced. I just still stand by the fact that, uh, the, the, the amount of coverage that we're giving them, uh, I know there's people there on the other job. I don't see that we're getting a benefit of not going through our standard process and getting, uh, making sure that, uh, we're doing this right. So I won't say anything else on the project.
Mr. Weisire?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Mr. Clinch, my question would be, why wouldn't on a project like this, why wouldn't we hard bid this as opposed to having a CM?
Uh, that's a great question, Mr. Weishire, because we're getting close to the two million. So in the event that we exceeded that two million, for whatever reason, that we would, uh, still comply with the, uh, the CCNA Competitive Contractor Negotiation Act. As you know, anything that's over two million, uh, requires that we follow that process. So given that this project was so close, that's why we chose the CM at-risk route. As you know, we had a, a similar instance at the, uh, the health clinic where that work exceeded two million, and that put the district in a difficult audit situation. Uh, so we followed this, this process to avoid similar situations.
Understood, and thank you. So as a follow-up to that, um, you know, on the, on the outset, and, and you're gonna have to tell me if I'm, if I'm understanding your, your response properly, please, is that on the outset, the idea is that if it got close or potentially had the risk of going over the two million dollars of CM would be the right approach? However, being that we're under the two million, is that still the right approach, or is what you're saying that, hey, we're only a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars under that threshold, and you're concerned about any potential cost overruns or others that would potentially move us beyond the two million dollar number? Which is it, just so I understand?
Well, we're actually hoping that we can, um, keep the project costs at or below this number, uh, so that we can actually take in additional scope. Originally, when the project was scoped, it included one additional building. And with the inclusion of that building, we would have been over the two million. So, um, we pulled that scope out so that we could keep it below the two million. However, again, we're hoping that we can achieve some substantial project savings as we work through the project so that we can incorporate that last remaining building in this project scope as well.
Okay. And then a follow-up question would be, talk to me a little bit about process and timeline. If at this point this evening, the board was not inclined to approve, um, this GMP, and instead gave direction to, um, rebid this through a hard bid process, and/or thinking about the time to have this work done, being that we sit now essentially, you know, coming into the middle of April, um, wanting to have this done before the start of the next school year. Talk to me a little bit about some of those pieces and parts, timeline for the physical construction and the replacement, as well as the process of going out and now looking at it from a hard bid standpoint.
Yes, sir. So the schedule, this is a project that we're, we're teeing up for this summer. And in fact, because of some of the lead times, um, some of those materials, we were looking at a substantial completion of September fourth. As you know, the staff and, uh, the students return on August tenth. So for that remaining portion of the work, uh, that was going to be performed off-hours. So we have a couple of options. One is to, um, hold off on the project, renegotiate the general conditions, and look at a project that would be completed during off-peak hours in the evenings and weekends. However, that will add cost to the general conditions to, to manage that project off-hours. Or the other option, uh, would be to, uh, you know, pull the project back, renegotiate, attempt to renegotiate the general conditions, that we would then be looking at doing this work next summer. And the lighting is at a, a state that we are current, our maintenance department and operations is currently concerned with the lighting levels at the school in various locations.
Sure, and I share that concern. I mean, I, you know, like I said, I physically have been there, walked the school with the, uh, principal, assistant principal, and former principal as well. So for a number of years, we've been aware that it's something we need to address. And as Mr. Thacker said, there's no question about the need for this project. Um, I just, um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not certain where I stand right now, Board.
Mr. Soto? Yeah, Mr. Thacker, your hands are up, yeah.
Um, my opinion hasn't changed at all, and in fact, I said I wasn't gonna say anything else again, but I have to tell you, I have major heartburn about adjusting scope to stay underneath a level of two million dollars to where we do not have need competitive bids. If we're doing the school, we should be doing the whole school. We should not be taking out a building so we can stay under the competitive bid process as far as I'm concerned. And I said I wasn't gonna say anything else, but it really hit me. I did not know that's what we were doing.
Let me just clarify that. So if we are above two million, we have to go out to the full-blown Competitive Contractor Negotiation Act, which requires that we issue RFQs for design and for a construction manager. This process allows us to use, uh, the CM through our continuing. They are allowed to do up to two million. So if we exceed two million with a continuing, that's where we would get into an, an audit issue. I, I hope that clarification helps.
All right. Mr. Thacker?
I don't have anything else to say.
All right. Um, I'm just going down, down the list here, Mr. Booth.
Uh, yes, I guess my question would be, um, directly for Mr. Clinch is, you, you know, we stayed under the two million and, and we did this continuing contract. If we, I, I guess just to be very, uh, blunt and direct, if we did this at hard bid, would it be less than one point eight?
Well, essentially, the subcontractors, the electrical and ceiling sub, those, those were essentially hard bids. The only component that we're adding to this that wasn't competitively bid was the general conditions and the general requirements with it, which is, you know, we're, we're clearly authorized to add those components as part of the project if we're using the continuing CM route.
And I guess to Mr. Thacker's point, is that hi, his, is his point is that if we are, you know, if, if our CM is doing this work and they're already on-site, why are they adding general conditions? Is that, is that kind of what I'm getting from Mr. Thacker?
Yes, that's correct. They are adding general conditions to provide the oversight to this project, but there is some savings that is being achieved by them already being on-site. Uh, and that's the, um, that shows the general...
So let it be blunt, tell me, if we were to go out and do this, say, you know, uh, go out and, and get a CM for a project like this, are you telling me that the general conditions would be more than the stated number? I think you said a hundred and, and some odd thousand. Uh, would it be more if we separated it out?
Uh, the general conditions...
I mean, I guess that, that's the question on everybody's mind, I guess, is, is it, is it more? Um, would it cost us more if we were to do this, uh, by going out and getting a different CM? Or is that a hundred thousand, or whatever that number is exactly, is it a savings because they're already on-site?
It is likely that if we went out with a RFQ through the CCNA process, that the general conditions and general requirements would be more. By doing this through the continuing CM with a CM that's already mobilized, we're able to achieve some savings.
So you, it is, it is of your, it is your opinion as a facilities director that the general conditions, uh, within this contract are a savings of what, if we were to go out separate?
Yes, sir. And, and, and I, I would not bring something forward that I, I wouldn't recommend to move forward with.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clinch.
Sorry, I was, I'm, I'm naturally looking, I just want to share, Board, I'm looking at that, at those provisions in the contract there. I believe they're page seven through ten. It's a chart in page eight, which outlines the expenses on the general conditions, general conditions work. That's what had me distracted for a moment there. Um, Mr. Booth, you just give your comments. Miss, we're back to Mr. Weisire.
Um, first of all, thank you, Mr. Clinch, for, um, your answers and, um, for your expertise. I, I will be honest to tell you, I'm still struggling. Um... I want this project done. It needs to be done. But I think I'll use maybe something Mr. Thacker said earlier, just doesn't feel comfortable. There's something not, and, and I'm, I'm feeling the same way, and I may be wrong. And if I am, that's okay. Um... Board, I'll tell you, I, I'm, I'm struggling because I know the importance of getting this done, but I know the importance of looking at every single dollar. Um, I'm leaning towards not approving this, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisire. Um, I'm gonna go back to Mr. Clarence, and then to Mr. Booth. Is that, so Clarence, please proceed.
Um, I just kinda want to say that I, I do disagree with Mr. Clinch on this. Um, the million three or roughly whatever it is in there that's in there for the electrician on this thing, uh, I believe I read in there today that somewhere the material should be around forty percent, uh, of that job. And, uh, if they are, that makes their labor around, uh, I don't, I don't have a calculator, seven hundred thousand dollars or something like that. I think, um, eighty plus twen, plus twenty-eight, the two, the, the superintendent and the foreman and the project manager combined for a hundred and eight hours a week. And it's, the number of light fixtures they're gonna buy, when they buy this project out, that the electrician's gonna do, or they're gonna do together, um, and the, the supervision on pulling these, for, I know exactly what they're doing. Um, they're pulling the fluorescents completely out, which is smart, and we're doing the right thing. Uh, I don't want to slow it down. I just, um, I don't see, I don't see any savings for being mobilized on the project. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Thacker. And I see your hand down. Mr. Weisire, your hand is still up.
Yeah, I just want to comment to Mr. Thacker. I, you know, I'm with you about not wanting to slow it down, but slowing it down, if we feel it's the right thing to do, um, is the right thing to do. And I know you know that, and I don't need to tell you that. Um, but, you know, and again, I'm preaching to the choir, to the whole board here, is that, um, speed is important, but making sure that we make the right decisions and that this board feels comfortable with the decisions we're making is more important than any of the other pieces and parts. Um, and Mr. Thacker, I'm, I'm with you on this one.
Um, I see one other hand, Dr. Pace? Ho, ho, hold on, Dr. Pace, if, we're not getting audio from your feed.
Okay. I apologize, Chairman Soto and members of the board. With the board's pleasure, let's table this item, and I will be happy to dig into it with Mr. Clinch and try to get something back to you in two weeks if it makes sense, or if not, make sure that we are being good stewards of the taxpayers' money. I do believe that this job was originally competitively bid and came in considerably over budget. We also do know, however, that market conditions are changing somewhat, um, due to the COVID virus, and it may be that we can pick up some savings there. But I, I want to make sure that the board is confident that this is the right, right work at the right price. So I'm, I'm happy to request, if, if it's the board's pleasure, to table this, and we'll bring it back.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I'd be happy to make a motion to postpone action on this item until our next scheduled school board meeting.
I will second that motion.
I will second that.
Um, and, um, if, if you don't mind, Mr. Thacker, I'll, I'll let my second be on the record and further state that I really appreciate your insights. Uh, um, you're a professional, intelligent, and very diligent board member. And, um, I just, um, if, if I'm anywhere vacillating, I will, I will always feel safe deferring to your judgment. I would not have moved forward with this item, um, as well. And so we have a motion. Any, anything further? No? Without any further discussion, we have a motion to ta, do we need a motion to table this, or we just...
It is a formal motion to postpone. Yes, sir.
We do have the motion by Mr. Weisire, seconded by myself. Um, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 I hear five. The motion, um, to table has passed five zero. Just bear with me, I have some windows open here. Okay, so this brings us to attorney's comment. Mr. Kuppenbacher?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, we had a non-teaching employee arrested and charged with seven counts of lewd and lascivious molestation on a child eighteen years or younger. Um, he's currently in the Osceola County Jail. Um, he's, superintendent has him on relief without pay. I will be bringing to the next board meeting, unless he resigns, a recommendation from the superintendent for termination. Uh, but tonight, I would ask for a motion to ratify the superintendent's relief without pay and to continue that until the next board meeting. And if you, if anybody wants individual details, the name of the individual for the record is Miguel Abia Torres. And if you, given the nature of what's described in the charging affidavit, David, I'd ask if you want to know, you know, details of the actual alleged crime, that you would call me directly and not have me do it publicly for the benefit of the victim.
Sure. So you're asking us to make a motion to continue the, um, employee leave without pay, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And at the next board meeting, I will be bringing back, we will either have a resignation or a termination.
Right. Okay. I will make that motion.
Second.
All right. So Castillo, Weisire, I have a question. The, um, I, in previous occasions, we've never had this, Mr. Kuppenbacher, this is directed towards you. In, in previous occasions, we've never had this process.
Right.
Um, in other words, you know, this is the superintendent's prerogative to, uh, look at the situation and take personal action, as she says, fit. Why are we do, why are you bringing this, you know?
Given the length of time that is going on with him being without pay, I don't want anybody arguing that if the board has the technical, I've had lawyers before make arguments, I don't agree with them, but I don't want to waste my time with them, that only the board can suspend payment under the contract. I believe the superintendent has the authority of it. Like, given when he was arrested and the time we're going into, I just wanted to button this up.
All right. So we're doing this to button it up?
Yes.
But we know, but, but I'm not incorrect in stating that...
No, sir.
Dr. Pace has the executive authority to go ahead and suspend without pay, based on her judgment of the situation. Am I correct?
That's correct.
All right. And that is the action, sir, that is the action that she decided to take in this instance.
Yeah, she did, and promptly.
And, and you want to put before this board just, um, our approval of that action?
And the, to continue that action.
Okay. I just, I'm, my questions go to whether or not this part was necessary, Board. But, um, I'll take the advice of the attorney, the board attorney, um, and, and go ahead and enter, and call it to both the motion by Ms. Castillo and the second by Mr. Weisire, to ratify the Dr. Pace, the superintendent's, um, employee action in to ratify the Dr. Pace, the superintendent's employee action in this matter to suspend without pay. Is that correct, Mr. Weisire? I mean, Mr. Kuppenbacher?
That's correct.
Very well. Any other discussion? Hearing that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
All right. Your five, five ayes, the, the motion passes five zero. Next. It's still on, it's still with you.
Members of the board, just while we're going, yes. Members of the board, I just wanted to tell you that while we are going through this, Dr. Pace and the team have been outstanding in terms of our ability to continue to deal with legal issues as they're arising. So you should know that the, the whole team is on top of everything.
Thank you for that. So cheers, Mr. Kuppenbacher. Anything else on seventeen point oh one, sir?
No, sir.
Thank you. We now move on to eighteen point zero one, superintendent's update on, on the COVID nineteen response. Dr. Pace?
Yes, Chairman Soto, members of the board. I, I do want to acknowledge some of the concerns that were expressed by our public during public comments. We are continuing to respond to parent questions via Let's Talk, via our website, and email, those types of things. We are working very hard to try to lessen some of the frustration that, that parents and students have felt, as well as teachers, and working through the systems. I will tell you that while we had some additional complications with the team's platform yesterday, the team reported today that it was working quite smoothly throughout the day. So it continues to get a little bit better. In addition, we are working very hard with our teaching and learning team and with our teachers to try to balance the workload. You know, board, I know that you are committed to high expectations for our students, just as I am. We wanted to make sure that our students were not just doing busy work or worksheets over the course of this nine weeks. We are in our fourth grading period of the school year, and we have learning that still must go on. But at the same time, we are not going to take away from the fact that everybody's feeling stressed right now, and we don't want this to be overwhelming either because of the technology frustrations, or because of the level of work that's being expected of students and parental support without that day-to-day contact with teachers. I do just want to share on, on a personal observation level, you know, a lot of times in our classrooms, our teachers are doing so much of the work, and students are getting to work with their peers collaboratively in small groups. So there, the, the amount of time that they're having to spend on independent assignments is more limited than what they're experiencing right now. But we are continuing to work to balance this process and, and are committed to doing so. And the teaching and learning team has already pledged to follow up with these two specific parents first thing tomorrow and, and address their concerns more specifically. Also wanted to share, as Mr. Soto mentioned with you earlier, our School Nutrition Services teams are doing an incredible job preparing meals for students across the district. We're now up to forty-two hundred meals and at fifteen sites, and that's just forty-two hundred breakfasts and then forty-two hundred lunches. So over eighty, eighty-four hundred meals that our, our folks are preparing and serving every day. And one of the things I'm just most proud of is that, as I shared with you in emails in my board update, they are not only feeding the bodies of our, of our children in this community, they are feeding their souls and their spirits and their minds, because I see smiles and laughter and dog treats, and our SROs are heavily involved in, in this process, and we're just super, super excited about that. I also did share with you that we've had some requests from our, our community to pass out different items at our School Nutrition Services site. I know that Ms. Castillo has asked for a conversation with the board, and I'm happy to take the board's direction on whether or not we want to be a part of passing out the unemployment application forms. And, you know, our team is committed to doing everything that we can to support our community in so many different ways. But I have been very, very sensitive to the fact that I also don't want to have uninvited or enhanced exposure to potentially the COVID nineteen virus with our School Nutrition Services folks or the families that we're passing out meals to. You know, we know how and where those meals are prepared with glove hands and, and clean locations, and I'm not taking, saying that anybody else is not, but just being super hypersensitive to the physical contact and, and that potential additional exposure to the COVID nineteen virus. And finally, I did have an opportunity, as I shared with you last week, to meet with our senior focus group. Had a great conversation about the, the stress that they're feeling, also the excitement that they're feeling about moving on to the next phase of life with their college acceptances that have, that have recently come in, especially to those top-tier universities. They understand that while we may not be able to do decision day like we've always done in the past, or award ceremonies like we've always done in the past, or even the prom, like it's been done in, in past years, they really want to hold tight to graduation traditions as much as we possibly can. So just today, our senior director for curriculum, Vicky Hickey, and Dr. Reinhardt and I worked with Osceola Heritage Park. We have managed to maintain our current graduation schedule, those days that are dedicated in May. If the need for the social distancing and stay-home orders that are in effect now are lessened by the end of May, we would try to hold to that same graduation ceremony, even if some social distancing has to be practiced. So say, for example, we have to space our students further apart on the floor, maybe limit the number of tickets that are provided to parents so that they can be spaced out around the auditorium at, at Osceola Heritage Park, we would still be able to continue to do that. And we're currently also pursuing a streaming possibility, so that if we had to limit tickets for folks in the graduation ceremonies, that we could potentially stream to their families outside. Don't have a firm cost on that yet, but we do have those dates still on the books, but, but tentative at this point. We now also have official backup dates that Dana and her team will be communicating to our public tomorrow. We have a letter that'll go out to all of our seniors and to their parents to reassure them that the board, the district, the superintendent is committed to trying to help honor that, but also to practice safety. So if in the event we're not able to have our graduations in May, we're looking at the week of July the sixth. Again, the big graduations at Heritage Park on July eighth, ninth, and tenth, and the smaller ones, the sixth and seventh of that week. So excited to be able to share that we're going to try to hold tight to those traditions, but also make sure that we do it safely, and we'll get more communication out to, to families in the next few days. So again, appreciate your support, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. I see Mr. Booth's hand is up.
Yes, Mr. Soto, I just wanted to say, I had a conversation earlier with Dr. Pace and about a lot of the concerns that were shared through the public comment and beyond, and certainly thank, thank her for that time today. I just wanted to stress to our community that it is about balance. You know, if you're, if you're in the healthcare industry, if you're working those jobs, you know what? Do the best you can in helping folks recover, you know, at, at whatever hospital, whatever facility you're at. And then don't, you know, don't worry too much about the school. I don't want folks like that, especially stressing out about the school. And I know Dr. Pace and her team are taking that to heart. Do the best you can, I think, is the best message we can put out there to folks. Do the best you can with what you have. And we want learning to continue, certainly, but, but, but strike that balance so that you're not getting overstressed and, and, and just try the best you can. So I, you know, parents are working so hard out there, I've got a lot of concerns, so just, it's just been comforting to know that so many folks really, really care deeply about their children's education. Our community cares, cares deeply about our children's education, so, but strike that balance, do the best you can. I just wanted, wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. All, all right. I don't see any other hands. So there's no unfinished business or new business, but we did mention in our modifications that Ms. Castillo wanted to talk about, I believe it was bus vouchers or, and what was mentioned by Dr. Pace just a few moments ago, of being able to provide information or document, things to help out the community and pretty much use our network of distribution to, to help the community. Ms. Castillo, you can floor.
Thank you so much. I'll, I'll go ahead and start with the bus vouchers. Board, I know that we have all been concerned about the transportation issues that we have been dealing with, and we probably all received calls from concerned parents stating that their children are not getting home on time, or that we have bus delays. And that is just, it's just the nature of our business right now for a lot of different reasons. I've talked extensively with Dr. Pace, as well as with members of our transportation department, trying to find a way to alleviate the bus issues that we have been having, and there are several tiered things that we can implement. I know that we are already looking for different locations for our buses, for bus garages, end-to-end with the county, so starting with the east coast, or the east coast, starting with the east side of the county, as well as eventually, and hopefully sooner rather than later, with my side of the county over in the west. So I do understand that we are diligently working on these issues, but I would like to possibly start talking about a way to relieve some of the bus issues. One thing that I have been talking about with Dr. Pace is possibly providing bus vouchers for some of our older children. Anecdotally, when I was in high school in Miami, before I came to Kissimmee, I had a bus voucher that was provided to me from the district, and I was able to take the, the public transportation. So I just wanted to know if this was a conversation that we would be willing to entertain, to possibly start alleviating some of these bus overcrowding issues that we're having in a way that, you know, can, isn't such a shock to, to the system, but that does help a little bit with some of the transportation issues that we have been having.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. I'm just looking to see if there's any hands or anyone, any of the board member or administration that wants to add to the discussion. I see Dr. Pace's hand is up. Dr. Pace?
Yes, Chairman, Chairman Soto, and certainly thank you, Board Member Castillo. We are certainly willing to reach out to partners and pursue this if it's something the board would like for us to follow. We already are now in partnership with LINKS, as, as you are aware, and our community is aware, for allowing some of our parents and students who need transportation to our school feeding sites to take advantage of those services for free. And if the board member, board members agree, I would be happy to have staff follow up to see what we could potentially look at next year. Typically, they won't add specific routes, although we can use some of their smaller stuff, but there may be some routes where students could take advantage of the LINKS service at their convenience, and, and certainly we'd be happy to try to work with them on that.
Thank you.
All right. And Ms. Castillo, you had a second item that you wanted to discuss.
Actually, if I can just, real quick on that item, just to make sure I'm tracking along properly, Ms. Castillo, you're talking about, not now, not in this moment, but you're talking big picture as a whole, correct?
Yes. This is, this is part of a way to alleviate some of the transportation issues that we have been having for years.
Okay. And this, and we don't have all the details yet, but I just want to see if I understand kind of where your head's at, so I can see if I can come along with this. This would not alleviate any of our already existing costs for our current transportation. This would be an additional cost to help supplement transportation. Help, help me understand maybe then.
So actually, Dr. Pace and I had a small conversation regarding the cost earlier today, so I don't have all the details, but based on what I said, we, would we be able to use some of our transportation dollars for the vouchers? Is that what, what we have discussed? Hopefully, I didn't misunderstand.
No, ma'am. I do believe that there is now the potential to get reimbursed for some of those types of things if we track it appropriately, but I will have to follow up with Mr. Creach just to double check on that. And I think potentially there could be some savings if we're not having to add routes to take care of some of the, the overcrowding. Typically, in the past, these opportunities, though, have been more optional. We wouldn't necessarily eliminate any of our drivers, or any of our routes, or any of our stops. We would simply provide this as one more opportunity. But it's something that, that definitely will have to take some more detail before I could bring back a firm recommendation to the board one way or the other. I know we even talked to LINKS originally about potentially helping out with some of the Neo City Academy routes, particularly because they come from all over the county. It, it's just a matter of kind of working through those processes and, and making it something that parents look at as a viable opportunity, as well as our kids in, in their paths to and from school.
Thank you.
Okay. So my follow-up on that then would be, and first of all, I'm, I'm perfect. First of all, thank you, Ms. Castillo, for your heart and your willingness to think outside of the box to find opportunities to serve our community. It's one of the, one of the great traits that you bring as a board member, and I value that. My quick lens on it would be, I'm okay with us reviewing and doing some research to understand what this would look like, but just so that, at least where I sit today, my, my opinion is clear. I would need to see some type of cost savings or efficiency that the board would be able to realize, because I don't believe that I would be able to support anything that would add additional cost or burden to what we're already doing. So I think analyzing and looking at all options is smart, and I applaud you for bringing it to us for consideration. But I would just maybe offer that little bit of word of caution, is that if it ends up becoming an additional cost to the district, I probably wouldn't be supporting it.
No, of course. I mean, I think that's where, where my head is at, too, especially with all of these budget changes that, that we are probably going to feel next year. But again, if there is some kind of way to have some cost savings, then I would definitely like to further that conversation.
Great. Thank you.
I will call Ms. Castillo to bring up her second item.
Oh, sure. So as Dr. Pace alluded to earlier, yes, I, too, have been receiving some calls from community members and leaders who are eager to share information with some of our community members who are possibly not able to receive it otherwise. And we do have a network that provides some kind of contact with the community members that need it the most. So I was asked to consider possibly sharing the unemployment applications at our meal distribution centers. I will tell you upfront that I, too, share Dr. Pace's concern with social distancing. I mean, the entire, the reason why we are in this situation to begin with is because we are in self-isolation right now, and, you know, we are supposed to be following the CDC guidelines, and I, I completely understand and agree with them. But I do want to know if there's anything that we can do in order to have our community, to give our community access to some of these forums, just because I don't know how else am I be able to get them. We do, you know, we are members of the community, and some of the members that will be hard of hit happen to be the same members who are getting, who are participating in the meal program today. So if it's not something that we can do at that center, is there anything else that we might be able to do in order to share those unemployment applications with our community members that are being hard hit at this moment?
Board, I have my hand up, if you guys don't mind.
We'll call on you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Just give the virtual gavel to the vice chair.
So here's, here's some, here are my thoughts. First, I wanted to go ahead and share with the rest of the board that I've been, I'm communicating with the superintendent during all these times. And one of the things that, that I have been encouraging is for the district to think about ways that we can leverage, and here, I will use, for example, what Ms. Castillo brought, brought up is, you know, our distribution network, in ways that we can help the community beyond what we're doing in terms of learning. Because these are special times, if we see that there's something that we can, that we can do to help, you know, in all of our efforts to keep everyone safe, then we should consider it. And if there is some recommendation or some idea that the administration thinks about, to bring it to the board, I really, I really would like to, I would really like for them to act in consultation with all of us before doing anything, not because, just because I just believe it's appropriate. The, now, let's talk about what Ms. Castillo said. Fundamentally, I agree with it a hundred percent. However, when we want to use our distribution, our, our ability to connect with the community, we always want to consider the safety factors first. And, and I'll just use for an example, I agree with, with, with Ms. Castillo's, you know, philosophy that we could do more than just distance education and, and the meals. But for example, I'm not used to, I use your example, Ms. Castillo, with your permission. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that actually having now, having somebody physically in our distribution centers, you know, with, with unemployment application or forms, it could be done, maybe we can use our website, and, you know, we could put out a, hey, look, you know, we have these links for you. And again, this comes from me speaking with, with Principal Condo, actually, you know, and we were talking about maybe having a website where we could give links to entertainment other than education for high schools and middle schools and elementary schools, maybe to watch old videos, or maybe, you know, lessons of music, or, or maybe they could, maybe some, maybe a high school student that always wonder how a verdi opera, they can find it through our website. We could promote that. Same way, if we could link to those documents, maybe we could leverage that way, because we really have to think about the, the safety concerns here. And we certainly do not want to add to that, of what may be little right now as information develops and there's more cases and more risk of exposure, may make even the risk that we're taking. that we're taking now even seem even greater. And I do feel, I do think that that is what's going to happen. But absolutely, I think, and I would hope that the administration, Dr. Pace, start thinking of ways that we could help our community deal with this beyond just what we're doing as, you know, public education. I think that the times call for that and I believe that if there are things that we could do, I would hope and encourage the school district to bring it, you know, share it with the board. And I know that Dr. Pace is appropriately always considering the safety and the health of our employees and our community and then after that, whatever we could do to help. So that's, so I'm with you, Ms. Castillo, and I think that it doesn't have to be a physical presence. There may be the need of using our distribution networks, what I mean the schools, with conjunction of other agencies, so long as it's safe and it improves the safety of the community of our employees, we should consider that when the question comes before us. So those are my comments. I'm going to go down the list here and I'm going to start with Clarence just because he's near to my name, okay? Then I'm going to go with Clarence, Mr. Thacker, you have the floor.
Yes, yes, okay. I hear what you're saying and I want to help and certainly my heart goes out to this time. I just have one word of caution that I see is we had two people today on the here the comment section that are overwhelmed. And my concern would be website picking up supplies, picking up a computer, picking up breakfast and lunch. I think we've got to be very careful being everything to everybody. And if we can do it in an easy way, I'm not opposed to it at all. I just get a little concerned that our mission is education. We've got a lot of other agencies that do other things, cities, counties, council on agings and lots of other things going on out here. And I get a little concerned, if we're going to help give some information, I'm okay, but I get a little concerned. I don't think that I want to see us get to where we are the central agency in the county for everything. So I want to help wherever we can help. Like I say, I'm not trying to be cold, but also our number one mission is educating children and I don't want to get, somebody goes to our website and starts reading stuff and they can't find anything about educating children and getting their kids taken care of. And I'm probably overstepping that or making that more direct than it needs to be. I'm not, like I say, I'm not opposed to doing some of these things. I think I just want to be careful.
Next up is Mr. Booth. Ricky, can you hear me?
Yeah, I think I'm, am I unmuted now? There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
Certainly, actually, Mr. Thacker told some of my thunder, if you want to call it that. We're the Board of Education and I think we need to focus on that. I set it up front and I'll say it again, I think the hardest job besides being, you know, in a hospital right now or being one of our first responders is being a superintendent of a school district. I want our superintendent and her staff worried about, worried about school and worried about distance learning and worried about virtual learning and worried about what our teachers are doing. I don't want them to be worried about getting papers from the reemployment department of the state of Florida into somebody's hand. That's not our job. Certainly, I want those folks to get those, get that paperwork if they need it. It's just not our job. I want our school nutrition services folks worried about handing out nutrition to students who need it. You know, again, I want our teachers worried about teaching and our staffs, our principals and these folks, our website folks worried about getting information out that pertains to the schools. I think Mr. Thacker said exactly what I was going to say. There are many other agencies and many other organizations in this community that do that kind of work. Certainly, if one of those folks needs to come on to a campus, I don't know if now's the right time and hand that out or do something like that, I could see that. But to be honest, I don't want Dr. Pace and her staff worried about any of this. I want them worried and focused about distance learning and what we can do to create the best educational atmosphere we can create in Osceola County for the next nine weeks. So I applaud Ms. Castillo. I don't want to seem, I want those folks, if they need that information, to get it. But if they're coming to the Board of Education or to a school to get it, they're coming to the wrong place. And so with that, I'll turn it back over.
Oh, going down the list, Mr. Weisire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, Ms. Thacker, Ms. Booth expressed my thoughts and viewpoints on it, so I'll add nothing further.
All right. You know, this was Ms. Castillo's item. Ms. Castillo, do you have anything else to add or further to state?
No, I mean, I wanted to bring it to the board. Certainly, I'm one person in a five-person board, so it was an idea that was put out. I happen to be on other community boards and I'm sure that I can go ahead and advocate for the same kind of service to be provided there as well. But this was an advocacy item that was asked of me and as a representative of my community, I wanted to make sure that I was heard on this board. So thank you so much.
Okay. And that will take care of two of the two items, which bring us to another modification. I believe it was myself and Mr. Weisire that wanted to address the public comments. I'll let you go first, Mr. Weisire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know as was right into the record earlier, there are some concerns surrounding the difficulty that exists in trying to navigate education as it stands today. And that is not just in Osceola County, it's not just in the state of Florida, but it's certainly across the United States. I only mention this for the value of giving broader context, as you guys know, and the role that I serve at the Florida School Board that also connects me with the National School Boards. And I'll be honest, as I hear people say, you know, Osceola County wasn't prepared or also accounted into this, I will just tell you flat out, that's not accurate. Our district did everything possible, as quickly as possible, to come alongside to provide the system and the structure as best that we could to remain compliant with what's required of us as well as adapting to the expectations that are provided to us from the state of Florida. Every single week and all week, in fact, as I finish this board meeting tonight, I will be on a call with the Florida School Boards Association, talking with our peers from across the state. And every single week on Friday, I host a statewide meeting for all school boards to understand what their challenges are, what their difficulties are. And what is being expressed is not unique to Osceola County in any way. Our peers across the state of Florida are absolutely dealing with this. And last Friday, I was on a call not just with the state of Florida, but across the United States with school boards and the National School Boards Association. And I can tell you that everybody is working through this. And when I say everybody, I don't just mean our staff and our superintendent, but I mean everybody, our students, our parents, our community and our education institutions. So I understand this frustration and listen, I am on Zoom almost every single night with my little guys who go to school in another district, Christina's boys, and trying to help them with their homework and their math homework. And so I am walking this journey alongside of so many of our parents right now and trying to make sure that learning is happening in every home. I know that it's challenging, I know that it's frustrating, but I also know someone who is helping students in other districts personally every single evening or throughout the day, as well as someone who's working with school boards from across the state and across the nation, that the comments that are made about the Osceola School District, what was put in place, what's happening, it just simply isn't true. It's not unique to us. We are all trying to work through this. And again, I'll go back to what I said earlier, my positive comments as a school board member is that the teams across this district and our superintendent, I have nothing but love, thanks and respect for you guys. Continue to work hard, continue to know that you are making a difference. And, you know, every now and then someone's upset about something and that's part of life. We can't make everybody happy, I understand that. But you guys are doing important work and I know you're doing it with fidelity to the best you can considering the circumstance. And so I will end by saying thank you, thank you and thank you.
Mr. Booth, you have your hand up. You don't have.
I just never had put it down, Chairman Soto. Pardon that.
That's okay. Do you still want to say anything? All right. So just, I want to direct my comments to the superintendent and her staff and her administration. I want to give you my perspective. And that is that I wouldn't be so concerned too much with the tone and the way that our community is expressing themselves, including our parents. These are, you know, everybody reacts to stress differently. This is something that is very concerning and I think that we're professional enough to look past that. But let's get what the real message is and that is that, you know, this is something that is a challenge for parents and for some students. This is not something that was expected. This is not something that, you know, that was wanted, this hasn't been imposed on them. It is fundamentally different to go through curriculum because we rely on our schools, our classrooms, our interactions in learning. So this is totally different. And what the message should be is the frustration, the, and not only that, but also the fact that it's going to affect some folks differently based on their situation, whether it be, you know, their living situation, their employment, you know, wealth and things like that do have, does have an impact as to how well a student and a parent adapt to these changes. And I just hope, and I mentioned this in the last meeting, and I asked Dr. Pace and I asked, you know, the staff to consider these things to the extent that it can be addressed with local policy. And so I just wanted to make sure that that's where the focus is and not so much on the tone or what people write, you know, about how they feel and things like that. I think that this is a norm that we could give a pass to that and just go to the fundamentals of what we're learning. Again, we don't know, you know, I am in favor of us doing what we're doing. I like our process, I like our procedure. I think it's working for the vast majority, but for those that it's not working, I would hate to see this be the cause of stress or some kind of negativity, you know, to the student, you know. I mean, so I know that this is going to require a little bit more conversation about policy and I just wanted to go ahead and remind the superintendent and her staff about what we discussed, about those comments I made before and I'm repeating them now. That's it for me. I'm good, I see one hand up and that's Mr. Thacker. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chairman. We just wanted to add a thank you to Tim's comments, there's three thank yous, I'll add the fourth. But something that I was thinking about the other day, just a little perspective with the school district, we have about 70,000 kids and roughly 80,000 employees. So if you look at that, we basically have about 80,000 people that are directly involved in the school district every day. That's one out of 4.5 people that live in this county. So if each one of those touches one other person, half of this county every day is touched by the school district in some manner or another. So when you hear the things that Ms. Castillo was talking about and you, Mr. Soto, on how can we continue to help, we are a big outreach and we are a big touch point. So everything we do impacts this county in a huge way. The lunches that we do, the breakfasts that we do, the computers that we've helped kids get to, the online services that we're providing on education and getting kids to focus every day. It's all hard and when you think about the volume of people that we are truly touching every single day in this community, it's kind of, it's a little awesome. So our staff is doing a fantastic job. Dr. Pace, you and your leadership team, I think, are doing a fantastic job. So I just want to kind of chime that in on Tim's comments and thank you all very much. If not much else, you can say it and thank you.
Mr. Thacker, and I agree with you 100% and I'm well aware of the impact that the school district can have in facing, you know, this epidemic, these conditions that we're, you know, that we're facing. And I agree with Ms. Castillo to the extent and also with Mr. Weisire and Mr. Booth to the extent that we can, that we can help without putting at risk, you know, because it wouldn't, you know, our employees, we have, we have, we have that always to consider. You know, we should, we should, we should go, and this is where maybe, you know, a couple of the board members and I will disagree, that I believe that if there is a way that we can help these efforts, even if it's not school related, but that we can leverage our outreach, like Mr. Thacker just said, we're just so impactful in this county, incredibly impactful. And if there's ways that we could safely do so, I would encourage, I would encourage those proposals to come before the board and at least give, you know, the other board members who may not, you know, agree with this philosophy, an opportunity to hear what those could be because, you know, it may change their minds. So it is precisely for those reasons that you mentioned, Mr. Thacker, and the fact that we are facing a very unusual circumstance, that we could be more than just be in the business of education. I think that the call, I think that the times call for that and, you know, to the extent that we may disagree, I respect that, but I do feel that Ms. Castillo moving in, you know, and Mr. Thacker's further explanation as to why I would encourage the school district to go beyond and whatever it could do to help us get past these very, very difficult times where we know that the consequences can be life or death for many people. I think I see one more hand up. Mr. Weisire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say one other piece to what I was saying earlier. And first, I want to say you did a very good job of sharing your viewpoint and the impacts and how frustration is communicated by different people at different times because we are all different and I respect and I think you did an outstanding job of sharing that. I want to, I want to end at least my portion tonight on this, really directed at parents again, is we know, just to be very clear, we know that it's not easy and we know that there are challenges and there's opportunity and there's room for improvement. And we want to continue to hear where there's opportunity to improve. We want constructive, positive feedback about things that we can get better at and how we're delivering education across the district. I had a very positive conversation with a very frustrated parent this morning about what learning is looking like in their home and how she's working to try to ensure that every student in her home is getting what they need. But the exchange and the dialogue was very kind, very professional, very supportive. And what I heard more than anything wasn't anger, but was concern and care and love for her child and recognizing that the best way for us to work together in partnership as a school district and as a family is for us to be able to have open communications without accusations and so on and so forth. So we know that there are difficulties to all of our parents in our community, we know there's room for improvement, we're continuing to work through that. We are asking for your patience and understanding as that takes place and continue to give us positive feedback on things that we can improve upon and our staff is committed to trying to figure out how to do that. We'll have limitations at times, we'll have to say no at times because we can't do it, but the more that we learn and the more that we understand, the better we can get and I think that's important to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisire. Do I see any other hands up? Even if I don't, is there any other further comment from board? Dr. Pace? No? Okay. Look, I think that, you know, for being our first board meeting, remote board meeting, I think I want to just commend, you know, all of the district staff, we're putting it all together, the time that our technology crew, you know, took and our assistants in contacting each one of us and walking us through installing these extensions in our web browsers and testing. I mean, overall, it was a very, very smooth, by the way, I'm closing up the meeting, guys. It was very smooth. It allowed for interaction. It, it allowed for interaction, we had a two-hour and fifteen-minute-long meeting. I think that we didn't, I think we gave all of the items, the consideration and discussion that we would have given it had we been in our, in, you know, in, in the district during one of our normal school board meetings. And so I want to congratulate everyone and commend everyone for their participation. I couldn't be more pleased. This will be something that will continue for us in, you know, at least for the short foreseeable future. Hope that future is as short as possible. But, um, our business must continue, and, and I, and I'm very proud of how everyone participated in, in, um, in making this very first one what I consider a success. I will give the final word to anyone else other, and I wait like two, like five seconds for a hand.
I'm just gonna say you did an outstanding job, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weisire, that does mean a lot to me, and I'll try to do better on our next meeting. And with that, I will call this, I will call this meeting to order. Adjourn this meeting.
Adjourned.
Very well. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good evening, all.
Good, sir. Thank you.